Good evening and welcome to the school board meeting for the Phoenixville Area School District for Monday, August 22. It is 7:21. Please stand for the pledge to the flag. Dr. Kellmets, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Overland?
Here.
Ms. Carmenito?
Present.
Mr. Goldberg?
Here.
Ms. Ruck? Ms. Seamus?
Here.
Dr. Serini?
Present.
Ms. Walker? Mr. Weiss?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Present.
Ms. Ronco?
Present.
Ms. Barbash?
Here.
We have seven board members and two student representatives present.
All right, thank you, Dr. Kellmets. Posted on the screen are some announcements of meetings and upcoming meetings. I draw your attention to the Board Forum for the new building, the Hair Sale property, which will be held on the 30th of August at 6:00 p.m., and that is at the middle school?
Middle school.
Middle school cafeteria. Information on that meeting is also posted on the district website. And on behalf of the board members, I would like to welcome our new student representative. We have Ms. Ronco returning and our new student representative, Elizabeth Barbash. We're looking forward to hearing from you at our regular meetings through the rest of the school year. Do you have a report for us this evening or are you just visiting?
We do have a report for the summer and just the upcoming start of school. I also wanted to welcome Lisa. I'm very sad to say bye to Aubrey, but I'm excited to have Lisa, and I know that she's going to do a great job, and she's going to tell us about some of the exciting things that happened this past week and coming up.
So this past week, schedules came out on Friday for high schoolers and middle schoolers, and if high school students have scheduling issues, they can contact Guidance to make appointments during the first week of school. We also had the start of preseason training and games. We are so excited for a new season. And then also, school supply list came out for middle school and elementary school. If any students or families need assistance buying school supplies, they can reach out to their school's administration.
There's even more coming up this week. So tomorrow is the first day of teacher in-service, which is exciting for returning teachers and new teachers. Freshman orientation at the high school is happening this Thursday. It's from 10 to 1, and it gives new students an opportunity to walk their schedules and meet some of their teachers, and they have a barbecue afterwards, which is very exciting. This is run by NHS and current high school students. The 6th grade new student schedule walk is also this Thursday from 1:00 to 2:30, and preseason is continuing, and some sports are having their first games and scrimmages.
So what's upcoming is the first day of school for all students is August 29. We are very excited for what this new school year will bring. High school back-to-school night and middle school back-to-school night are coming up. Parents can meet students, teachers, and walk their schedules. High schoolers' back-to-school night will be September 7 from 6 to 8, and middle school back-to-school night will be September 8 from 6:30 to 9.
And just in general, as this summer comes to a close, we want to give our well wishes to the class of 22, as most of them are leaving for college. We're very excited for them, and we're also very excited to go back to school and start off the new school year. And that's all we have for tonight. Thank you.
All right. Anybody on the board have questions for student representatives? All right. Is it Elizabeth? Is that what you prefer?
Lisa.
Lisa. Got it. Okay, thank you. Thank you, both of you. At this point, we will move on to reports from our board committees and representatives. Ms. Carmenito is filling in for Mrs. Ruck this evening?
Yes, so we met earlier this evening. We looked through the personnel report, which did include several resignations, appointments, a few leave requests, and a list of volunteers, and then also looked at the approval of the annual contract renewal with the substitute employee services for 22-23 school year. I'm sorry, and also finance, sorry. And then, as far as finance, we looked through the approval for the dispersment of school district funds for both June 2022 as well as July 2022, and acknowledged the receipt of district financial reports for, again, both June 2022 and July 2022. And in addition to that, we are looking for the approval of security services agreement with Titanium for the 22-23 school year.
Okay, so I just want to clarify, the personnel report and the contract for the substitute services are on the consent agenda for this evening. All the rest of those items will be on the approval list for the upcoming meeting on September the 12th. Did anybody have questions for Ms. Carmenito about the finance or personnel?
I'll just also clarify, or not clarify, but add that we had a good discussion about the elimination of the occupation tax and learned about some progress that hopefully will be made this year after the election in Harrisburg that will allow us to do that. So good that we're talking about that.
Okay, moving on. Mr. Weiss, do you have a report for buildings and grounds?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam President. The approval items for buildings and grounds for the September 12th meeting is approval of a purchase of two lawn mowers in the amount of $28,400. That is a budgeted item. Approval of the complete Santa Glaze, if I hopefully said it right this time. Work on the school elementary school bathrooms for $22,200. Approval of district tree work by Beyond the Leaf in the amount of $24,535. Approval of repairing of the high school elevator. We're still, we're looking at an estimate of about $87,400, but until the work is done, there may be some minor adjustments to that. And then approval to the turf maintenance two-year, and the quote for that was $53,750 for one year. And we also had, we briefly talked about the SLEP plan that is being prioritized. That work is ongoing. The sewer grinder pump, looking at alternative solutions there at the borough's request. And we reviewed the summer projects. And lastly, there's a, for the sale of the kindergarten center, the court date is set for October 17. Check our website for information on that. That is all I have, Madam President.
All right, questions for Mr. Weiss? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the board representative reports. Ms. Seamus, do you have a report for the CCIU?
Yes, I have it on my phone. It's like a little computer. Our TCHS campuses are expected to have an enrollment that we have not seen before as of today. We have a 14% increase in enrollment from last year with a total starting enrollment of 25, 69 students, with auto service and cosmetology being the top enrolled programs. Head Start has a slight increase in enrollment, however, there's an increase in funding, which will help us compensate staff for the benefit of retention and retainment of staff. The Board acted mostly on routine contracts and agreements, which were needed for the startup of the 2022-2023 school year. And the next CCIU Board of Directors meeting will be held Wednesday, September 21, 2022, at 7:30 at the CCIU Learning Center on East Lincoln Highway in Coatesville, PA. And that is my report.
All right, thank you. Ms. Seamus, questions? All right, seeing none, let's move on to the legislative report. Mr. Overland?
Yep, don't actually have much tonight because both at the federal and state level, they're in recess now, so, yeah.
All right, noted. Dr. Fagley, superintendent's report?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'd like to begin by thanking everyone who's worked so hard to prepare for the 2022-2023 school year. Without a doubt, this seems to be one of the smoothest starts. It's interesting, I have a feedback off of my mic. No, I have feedback off that one. Try this one, much better. Without a doubt, this year has been one of the, I'll call it, smoothest, easiest starts we've had in many, many years. I'd like to start by thanking the building secretaries and the office staff. Without them, we would not get all the stuff gunning going. There's just no doubt about it. The counseling secretaries, making sure the schedules got out and doing all that good work, good, hard work. The central administration support administrative assistants, they've just done a bang-up job helping make sure we've been moving along. Our enrollment specialists, our finance people in the district office, our specialized programs and services folks, making sure we're getting all the IEPs out and moving forward with all that good work. Human resources team, I don't know of a team that has had to work much harder this year than anyone done this year with all the new hiring that's taken place. And then the superintendent's and curriculum office support team, just great job making sure we're getting all the curriculum materials out there and everything taking place. Thanks to the technology team, we have all the computers out there ready to go. We do have more coming in for distribution in a little bit, but we are, we're ready to go with our computers. Transportation department, they have gotten the routes done. It looks like we will be having a full complement of drivers, so that's, knock on wood, good news. Hopefully, no one gets sick, because it's not like we have a lot of substitutes. So if you're interested in driving, please let us know. Christ will take you and get you trained at no cost to you. The food service is ready to go. We are starting to enjoy their food here even tonight. The maintenance team kept the grounds looking good, and it was really tough this summer with all the heat. Trying to keep those baseball fields looking green and good was very, very challenging, but also making sure that the buildings were ready electrically and other ways. And then, if you haven't walked through the buildings, the flooring and the rooms just look absolutely amazing this year. The custodial staff has just done a tremendous job. And of course, I need to make sure I thank the administrators for all their work. Again, this is, all came together. It looks like it's going to be a great opening. We can't wait to see the faculty tomorrow and all the students on the 29th. Looking forward to seeing everyone back in the buildings, ready to go. On being in the buildings and ready to go, over the years, we've had a number of themes that have taken place here in Phoenixville. One is helping make sure all students reach their full potential. That's what we started out, making sure everyone had the opportunities they needed in order to be successful. We then moved to the theme Together We Can, and Together We Could Make a Difference. We made a huge difference in lives. Actually, working together, we got through the pandemic pretty darn well. And when you look at our staff surveys, they say over 90% of them are saying that we did well getting through the pandemic. Were we perfect? No, but we did an absolutely awesome job. This year, we're going to be focusing the entire district on belonging and making sure that you belong and feel belong, that you belong to the district. Research shows that a very, very important aspect of student success in school is whether or not they feel that they belong to the school community. Do they have a friend? Can they go talk to somebody? Do they know somebody that really makes a difference in their lives? When a student feels they belong, they're more engaged, they do better academically, and yes, they work hard at making sure every other student feels engaged and belongs as well. And so it's very, very key. And when we look at the research out there right now on the studies, that has been a huge problem that has dropped, the sense of belonging across the nation in schools. It is actually down in the 50th percentile range, which is, in our view, very, very scary and one of the things we want to make sure that we address directly. So our theme this year is P-A-S-D, You Belong Here. And that is everybody, you belong here, we want you to be part of the district, we want you to feel that you are integral to the district. And Board, as an effort, we are going to put out t-shirts, and you get to pick your t-shirt. It's over there, waiting for you to pick up the right size, small, medium, large, extra-large and extra-extra-large. But, I mean, it's really, hopefully, you know, it's a very nice shirt, P-A-S-D, You Belong Here. We'll be giving those out to all staff, and when we say all staff, we mean all staff. This will be going to bus drivers, everyone over 700 folks. Everyone will be receiving one of these shirts. And so, thank you very much. We look forward to this theme, and you'll be hearing it a lot. We've already checked out the hashtag, hashtag P-A-S-D, You Belong Here. They got me to do the hashtags. They're going to teach me how to get that done. I know, Mr. Overland, what can I say? I'm slowly getting to that point of doing hashtags. But thank you very much for all your support, Board, because with all your support, we can work to make sure that every kid feels that they have a place here in the Phoenixville Area School District. So that is our theme in my report. Thank you.
All right. Board members, do we have questions for Dr. Fagley? Thank you for those cool t-shirts. All right, Mr. Weiss, we need to discuss the upcoming PSBA election?
Strategicals is at the end.
That's at the end.
Okay. I have an old copy of the agenda from the weekend. Okay, I sent down an email as the board secretary. I believe it was sent out on Friday, calling to your attention, and it was in Dr. Fagley's board update also, about the PSBA having elections for their officers. The season for voting is starting and runs through, I believe, the beginning of October. I am looking, and I looked at the candidates. Basically, there's one candidate per position, so it's not really opposed choices. So I'm looking for a consent so that of the slate as PSBA presented it, and with that, then I would be able to vote in behalf of the district. Ms. Seamus?
So moved.
So what we're going to do is actually, I'm just going to ask for a thumbs up, thumbs down. This is, we just need to give Jerry a direction on how to vote the Phoenixville School District. So I'm going to go thumbs up. Anyone want to be thumbs down on this? Okay. All right, Jerry, you have the consensus of the Board to move forward with the PSBA slate.
Thank you, everybody.
Unless someone wanted to, like, mount a write-in campaign to be an officer at the PSBA. Okay.
Thank you, Jerry.
All right, so at this point in the agenda is public comment on our consent agenda, and we did not have anyone who signed up for that, so we are going to move on to Board approval of the consent agenda. This is the curriculum committee items from our last meeting two weeks ago, which are listed on the agenda. The field trips, some information about education agreements, the 2022-23 Health and Safety Plan also includes several policies. These were review of regular policies, not P&amp;Ns. And also, the personnel report from the prior finance meeting, and also includes the approval of the personnel tonight. And didn't we also have the substitute? Substitute agreement? So I have on here approval of the annual contract renewal with ESS for substitute employee services for the 2022-2023 school year. All right, any board members have comments, want to have discussion on the consent agenda items? All right. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Ms. Seamus, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Dr. Kellmets, may I have a roll call vote on the consent agenda?
Mr. Overland?
Aye.
Ms. Ruck? Ms. Seamus?
Yes.
Mr. Goldberg?
I'm a no on item one, the rest I'm a yes on.
Ms. Carmenito?
Yes.
Dr. Serini?
I on curriculum number 12, nay on all others.
Ms. Walker?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. It was nay on all?
All other items.
Yay on 12.
Nay on, yes on 12.
12, thank you.
The field trip request, no on everything else.
Ms. Walker, Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you, Dr. Kellmets.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I am not seeing the approval for the substitute service under voting items. I saw it earlier in the agenda.
So I see that in the discussion of future voting items listed on the agenda, but you are correct, I don't see it listed in the official consent agenda. So I'm going to ask Mrs. Rockwood, are we going to be in a bind if we have not approved that tonight? Okay, so we will make sure that that is included for the consent agenda on the September the 12th.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I'm just being a stickler here, but considering Dr. Serini excluded number 12, I don't know if 12 is actually, really number 12, or if number 12 is actually number 14.
It's numbered 12 up here on the top.
Well, I'm looking at the...
The numbering was a little odd.
Above the 12 is a 1 and a 2.
So can we clarify that Dr. Serini voted yes to approve the field trip requests and no to other items and not worry about how they are numbered? Dr. Serini, is that all right?
That is correct. Thank you for the clarification.
Can we do that? All right. All right. So at this point in the agenda, we have our second public comment period, and I don't see anyone who's signed up to speak on our roll call item, but we do have one roll call item on the agenda this evening. This is approval of the strategic plan and superintendent goals for the 2022-2023 school year. Would anyone like to have discussion on the new superintendent goals and strategic plan for the upcoming school year?
Yes.
All right, so first I need a motion to approve that.
So moved.
All right, thank you, Mr. Overland. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Seamus. All right, now we can have discussion.
Okay. On the, just like to say that the, in the current revised... It's on.
Speak into it.
You can't hear me? Okay. We can fix that. All right. In the current format, the district goal title also is sedotimus with a goal for the superintendent. I just wanted to clarify that, because in the past years, they were not all on the same piece of paper. And this, this other comment, there were, let's see, no, that's, that's fine. So our number, the very first item that starts on the first page, it says, if you look at, someone ought to bring up the...
Dr. Kellmets, can you bring up this document on the screen? Just, I think if you click that link, approval of strategic plan, there we go. Is it possible to zoom out so that that is legible?
No.
Or zoom in, I'm sorry? There you go, thank you.
Okay. So when I read this goal, it starts off with 95% of the graduating class will meet state requirements using one of the available pathways to graduation. I have no particular problem with that sentence, but the sentences below that, obstacles to graduation will be identified, students who drop out or do not meet graduation requirements will be provided with additional time to satisfy graduation. I'm okay with the concept, but it is an open-ended additional time. I think we need to define that, because with the current wording, somebody who dropped out 23 years ago can come back and say, hey, I dropped out, the district owes me some assistance in getting a GRE. So I don't think that was the intent of the wording, but I would like the wording to be a little more defined so that we can make a proper assessment or just not include that, include that.
So I think I'm hearing Dr. Fagley say the students are not eligible for services past their...
Past 21st birthday.
And that's fine, sir. I just think we, in fairness, to be able to evaluate, we need to have...
Okay, do you have a suggestion on a date or revision that you would like to see?
I'm good with the 21st birthday, or I know in many years, we usually let it go through the summertime, because there are summer school and other programs. You know, I'm fine with that, but I just think having a definitive end of additional time would be beneficial and...
They're allowed to continue to enroll until their 21st birthday, so, you know, we would...
Okay.
So I would recommend that, yes. We do initially start with trying to have them complete by the end of August of the year they graduate, but if they are so inclined and want to put in the work, we want them back. We want them to graduate.
And I'm all for that. I don't want to leave the impression that I'm opposed to that, but I just think we need to crispen up the wording there.
So could we say something like 95% of the graduating class will meet state requirements, continue on like that before they reach their 21st birthday?
Sure.
Or is there some of...
Well, that, well...
I think we'd put it in the, in the next round where we talk about students who drop out or do not meet the graduation requirements, will provide it with additional time up to their 21st birthday to satisfy the graduation requirements.
Yeah, because then you want to be able to grade on the 95% coming through there.
If we're talking, the 20, if we change the wording, we're still going to need to carve out for special ed, past the 21st birthday, that is. That I'm incorrect? They have through their 21st, they have through their 21st, the end of the year of their 21st birthday. Yeah. To graduate, to meet the requirements. But we have further obligations for basic education versus special education for 21 years old, don't we? No, we don't. Even better, okay. We could just say... Well, I say that unless the legislature does what they did this year, which is added an additional year, which we wouldn't know. We can only work with what we've given, what we have right now, so... Right. We could just say, consistent with state law, some things. Actually, that's a great idea. I say we just leave it at that.
Thanks, Scott. All right. But wait, there's more?
Yeah, oh, wait, there's more. The next bullet down on the Keystone exams, we've run into an issue in this year and other years where we're not able to get the data to make the actual assessment by the end of the current school year. And, you know, we either need to... And if we need to do the evaluation during, for the school year and then shortly thereafter the school year, do that, I don't know if we'll have the data in hand, the same thing with the SAT data, to, you know, to make a fair assessment. So I'm a little bit at a loss of how to fix it. I don't want to say, well, you got to August, but we're going to do the review in June. That's not fair. I, you know, I don't necessarily want to get rid of a requirement on the Keystone exam, 80%, you know, proficient or better, but we need to write it such that it is achievable within the school year. And I guess I'm open, Dr. Fagley, or...
When do we typically get those?
Late July typically, but not always.
Right.
I mean, you know, we're at the vagrants is.
Yeah.
So even late July, you will not have it for this piece, and there's nothing...
So is there, is there any way, I guess I'm searching for a way to keep us on track, because if my memory is correct, we have, at least while I've been on the Board, consistently gone past that 80% by a fair amount. I think, no, not always, okay, then I'm mistaken, but we need to make it a doable goal and, you know, one that we can get the data to assess.
Jerry, can I just point out, this goal as written does not have an evaluation date on it. We could agree whenever expeditiously administration receives the information that at the next board meeting that we would receive that information. And if it's not available in a timely fashion to include in our annual evaluation, it's just not there.
So then, that's fine, but then we need another option on the evaluation form, because then it's not that the person didn't meet it or exceed it. Do you need an option to say NA or something to...
To be determined?
TBD.
All right, fair enough. And that was not an option that I directed administration to put on the form when we did the evaluation this year.
And then you also took off the partial, which was our hand.
So that is something that we can change for next year.
Okay. And I have one... Okay. And I have one last one.
Jerry, what else?
One last one.
All right. So just to be clear, are you okay with this district goal Keystone exam, 80% of the 11th grade cohort as written?
And change the evaluation part?
It, it doesn't have a date on there.
I know, but, okay. Yeah, we'll change the evaluation form. Yes, I'm fine with that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And on, what's page 11 of, of this is on goal four. It's the second to last page. There's, and it's the second bullet on that page. It's, it starts with administration will report to the board in executive session three times per year regarding school safety measures. I would like to add in there, three times per year and once per year in open session. I think we owe the public a once a year reading on our, on our safety, our school safety measures.
The problem with that is the, this disclosure would be pretty limited.
Doesn't matter. It's, it's, we have that now, but to tell them nothing is.
I saw that, I saw that I want to, it would be very generic.
That is a problem that we have now when we talk about school safety things.
But it's not our, we didn't generate the problem. It's executive, it's because of executive session information and security information.
Okay. Well, my opinion, and it can be voted down, is that there should be at least one public briefing on our school safety situation, you know, that we owe the public once a year. You know, we're going to talk about it multiple times in executive session where the details of the plan are, but just as we say now, you know, we did an audit and we're meeting the audit, or we're not meeting the audit, or whatever, you can, you can provide some information to the, to the community on the state of our school safety measures.
Yeah, and I'm not opposed to that. I just, I, I think that.
It sounds like it.
I'm not opposed to the, in theory, I'm opposed to it. I'm not opposed to it in theory. I'm just pragmatically, I don't know how that's going to look when we're severely limited. It's, I don't want to, I don't want to draw ire because we are being, giving such a generic report.
We've already, Dr. Garitano has given a number of public briefings with sanitized material.
Yeah.
So I don't see why that couldn't happen again in some type of summary format to, to where, you know, to where we're doing.
Okay.
So I, I am hearing.
We already do that.
We, we do typically already do that.
But it's not stated here as one of his goals.
Well, I don't know that it's supposed to be, it should be a goal, though. In other words, it could be a policy. It doesn't need to be a goal.
I, is this, is it in a policy? You're going to chair a policy. Is it in a policy?
What'd you say?
Is it in a, is it in a policy that says that?
I don't know.
Okay, so let's put it in the goal.
Well, listen, if you're saying it belongs, it belong, I, I agree with you, but if it's not in policy, then it should be, it should be in policy. I'm saying it doesn't belong here.
Well, okay.
And I'd be lying if I knew it, you know, the hundreds of policies if it was in there.
Then.
All right.
Then we'll vote on it.
So the, the decision is, do we want to add to this goal in addition to the three times per year executive session, a, a public?
An annual state of the school safety.
So are there other board members who would like to weigh in on this point?
I actually think that, I think, I actually think the line in and of itself doesn't even belong here, to be honest with you. If, if, I don't think reporting to us in executive session, I mean, that's a policy item also. I don't know whether it needs to be in here any more than Jerry's idea needs to be in here.
I think it is there because on the part to the left, there is a strategic plan goal that says collaborate with appropriate agencies to ensure that the district infrastructure and procedures align with school safety recommendations.
I'm sure, but it's still the tail wagging the dog.
I was attempting to try and make sure that everything that's in our plan has a corresponding district goal, so maybe.
And I'm with you on that. I was there literally when I was on, I was in, in, in some of these meetings, and at the time I thought it was a good idea. Now I don't.
So your recommendation would be to scratch both of those? Is that what I'm hearing?
Not both, just that bullet point.
The bullet point that starts with collaborate on the left or the bullet point that starts with administration on the right?
The narrow cast one.
So then we would have something in our strategic plan that does not have a corresponding superintendent goal?
Well, I mean, I think that's arguable. I, I think that's arguable because there's, there's, there's other stuff on there that's tang, that's tangentially related. And even if you're correct about that, I'd rather put something that corresponds correctly than something, than trying to fit a square peg into a round hole.
Do you have a suggestion?
Not on that bullet point. I just, I'm being candid. I know that it doesn't, I don't think it belongs there, but I don't have a, but I don't have a remedy for you without thinking about it.
Okay.
Of course, that's just me. If everyone else thinks that I'm, that's.
All right. So it sounds like we have several choices. We can leave this as it is. We can, to Jerry's point, add something else to the district goals on the right, which would be a public school safety measure report, or we can strike both of those.
Well, only one of them's on there.
I meant the district goal on the left, the strategic plan goal about collaborate with the appropriate agencies and the executive session reports. Are you, are you recommending that we only just remove the executive session goal?
Yeah.
All right. Dr. Serini, I'm going to start with you. Do you have a suggestion? What are your, what are your thoughts about this?
Overall, I fundamentally disagree with how this document was generated and was in it. So I, I don't have any other comments at this point.
All right. Mr. Goldberg, so I'm assuming you are recommending striking the second bullet point that starts with administration will report to the board in executive session?
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Seamus. So your thoughts?
I disagree. I just, I disagree. I don't have any thought with, with, with Jerry's idea, so.
So you, I'm sorry, you would like to see the public comment? You would like to leave it as it is, or you would like to strike?
I'd like to leave it as it is.
Leave it as it is. Ms. Carmenito?
I agree with Mr. Goldberg. I think we can get rid of the administration will report to the board in exec session.
All right, Mr. Overland?
Well, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I want to make sure I'm clear. I'm not saying, I'm just saying get rid of it from this document. I still want.
No, no, I agree with, I agree with that. Yes.
That's correct. It doesn't mean don't do it. It just means not in the plan. Mr. Overland?
Yeah, I don't think that this matters. I mean, we can have a executive session briefing anytime we, we ask for it, and same with a public briefing. So I don't.
All right. So Mr. Weiss, sounds like you are on an island about adding an additional brief?
So it appears, but it, I, I've learned that if it doesn't show up in something like this, you don't always get it. So just beware that if you take it out, you lose your leverage to make sure you get it.
All right. So it sounds like the consensus is to strike that second bullet point under district goals that begins with administration will report to the board in executive session three times per year regarding school safety measures. Did anyone else, or do Mr. Weiss, did you have additional thoughts about this document?
No, and I want to thank my board members for having the conversation. I appreciate it.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions, comments, concerns about this? All right, seeing none, let's move on to voting. So Dr. Comets, can I have a roll call vote on approval of the 2022-2023 strategic plan and superintendent goals?
Ms. Seamus? Yes. Mr. Goldberg?
No.
Ms. Carmenito?
Yes.
Dr. Serini?
Nay.
Ms. Walker? Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Overland?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruck? Mrs. Turner?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. The board will now hold a discussion on school safety and security. We're going to start with a brief presentation from Dr. Fegley and Dr. Garitano. Following the presentation, the board will hold discussion. Please recall that some of the information the board has received is confidential, and we will not be discussing those details in public. So if necessary, the board may move into executive session if we need to discuss any of those items. If that happens, we would certainly come back and continue our public discussion. So with that, Dr. Garitano?
All right. Okay. So what I'm going to do first is we'll run quickly through the PowerPoint from two weeks ago. I want to thank the members of the community who came to listening session and made comments. We will address some of those comments that we, we can at this session. Then I will give you the information on the SRO, SPO, or armed security, and you can have that discussion. So we discussed the safety audit, safety planning, overview of our drills and prevention strategies at the last board meeting. In terms of the safety audit, it was conducted in 2021. The goal was to take a look at what we were currently doing and look for opportunities for improvement and growth. Our general security procedures were reviewed. They included tags on our cars that are on our lots, staff wearing ID, classroom door procedures, and everyone being trained in our Alice procedures prior to the 2223 school year. In terms of school safety planning, we are meeting quarterly. That meeting is with law enforcement, local law enforcement, and the Chester County Safe Schools Coordinator. All the comments from the board session last, two weeks ago will be discussed at our committee meetings. Terms of drill requirements, PDE requires that we hold two, or the emergency drill every year. We are above PDE mandates, and we hold two lockdown drills every year. We also hold two severe weather drills each year in addition to our monthly fire drills. We then looked at the prevention in the buildings. These were kind of the hardening of the infrastructure, things that we were doing in terms of projects that were physically, physical projects in the building and also our random police walkthroughs. And then we dealt with a, a number of slides that looked at the mental health components of school security. We talked about our training for staff, our trauma-informed care, youth mental health first aid. We also looked at our programs and resources. The focus on belonging is a big one. If you're reading a lot of the reports that come out of the tragedies from last year, you'll see that not only local law enforcement, but all the way up to Secret Service really wants you to focus on belonging and having kids be able to feel comfortable in reporting things before they happen. The best way to prevent an incident from happening is having great communication with the students. And then we looked at our personnel resources for the mental health aspects for students, and that's our behavioral specialists, our Lakeside Mental Health counselors, our building counselors. We do have a therapy dog and restorative practices for students. So some of the comments from the listening session that we can address, the first comment about the middle school backpacks. Prior to the pandemic, students were not permitted to carry backpacks. We moved to carrying the backpacks through the building simply because we couldn't social distance at the lockers, the way the lockers are, are situated. So the middle school is taking that away. We had a number of complaints about the size of the backpack, the weight of the backpack. And students are going to be given tech packs this year, and that will be for the laptop. So a parent purchasing something that they wanted to put in a backpack as a shield can put that in a tech pack. If the tech pack is not big enough, reach out to middle school administration. They will give you the criteria of what a tech pack could be, and you can buy something bigger. But in terms of the backpacks, they would be going back into the lockers. And really, with backpacks, an argument can be made on both sides of the issue, right? Backpacks can be used to conceal items. So they will be using the tech pack for just the laptop, pens, pencils, paper, and then they'll carry their usual binder in the middle school. Terms of notification to the public, if we have an emergency here, law enforcement becomes in control of that emergency. So law enforcement will be directing our communication to our families in terms of reunification, what the processes will be. And in terms of notifying the general public, that would be done at their discretion through probably a reverse 911 call. So they would tell people to shelter in place. They would give the information about that, but the law enforcement community would be doing that notification to the public. We had a question about police walking through the buildings as opposed to looking at maps. So when we talk about reasons for police walkthroughs, those reasons are really twofold. And without going into specifics, the first reason is so that the officers, the officers are seen as members of the community, building relationships with students. The second reason is so this, the officers, when they walk through, understand the physical layouts of our building. So that's about as specific as I will get with that, but there are the two purposes of the walkthroughs. In terms of the SRO, which is a school resource officer, school police officer, or private security, the training is the same. If you are an armed security personnel on school district property, you must have NASRO training, which is National Association of School Resource Officers. The differences really lie in who the officers report to. So an SRO typically reports to the chief of police. And if we went back to an SRO, we would need to have an agreement with the police department. One of the complexities of having an SRO could be when they're controlled by the chief of police. If there's an issue, the SRO could be pulled from the building. In terms of an SPO and private security, very similar. Okay, you're probably looking at a retired police officer. So when Mr. Goldberg talks about Act 120, retired police officers would have went through Act 120, but if they don't have Act 120, to be armed on school district property, you have to go through Act 235, which is the ability to carry a lethal weapon on a school campus. And they all fall under Act 67. So in terms of what the actual training is, it is the same for an SRO, an SPO, or an armed security guard. So we came up with some questions for the board to consider. I'm not going to read them. I'll leave them up there in terms of considering armed security and what those questions might be that you contemplate in a discussion.
So is this a point that you would like us to discuss these items?
Why don't we finish going through the grants?
You want to go through the grants? So I'll let Dr. Fegley kind of talk about the grant recommendations that we're making.
So as the board knows, Kingsley School District is receiving a $165,000 safety and security grant. That money must be used as level one identified by the grant folks. Now, level one, they've created the level ones. There's some agreement and disagreement among the level ones when you get to the police forces, et cetera. But, and that's one of the reasons in an update I gave sent to the board, we pulled one of the items from the grant and moved it to another recommendation. Items one and two that you received earlier, or actually on Fri, Friday, will be covered by the safety and security grant. We believe that we'll get both those items fully covered in there. We're still waiting in all, full disclosure, for the security agency to get back with some final details on the one grant, but we did receive some, I'll use the word good news today, as, as far as what the costs would be. Number three, we continue to recommend that we move forward with number three. We would be asking the board to give us about $60,000 to do that. Number four is somewhat similar, but it's in a different location. We'd be asking the board for, tend to do that.
Dr. Fegley, I missed a step somewhere. Number three, four, five, six, of what?
Of the recommendations for security items that I had sent out to the board. Yeah. Number five, we'll probably get into a discussion of that, but we're recommending number five for the board's consideration, and that would even be if you do not go with the personnel recommendation that we be submitting to you. Number six, that is an additional $50,000 for some additional security measures around all buildings. We recommend that that also take place. Number seven is a good one. This is absolutely the lowest one and one when we're looking at, yes, it'd be nice to complete, but waiting is not going to make a significant difference for us this particular year. We have enough work to do in these other areas that, you know, this may be one that we wait for until next year. But we are, that is the approximate cost for that particular item that goes to put in. The monitoring of cameras live, that is approximately an $80,000 yearly personnel expense. That personnel expense, we are recommending if we go with it, that we go with an outside agency. And part of the reason for going with an outside agency is they would be responsible not only for the training on how to use the camera system, but also they would be responsible for filling in in case there is an absence. And this is a skilled training area in order to make sure they're doing it properly. So we are recommending that this be outside. This is, please note, for school days. This is not looking at covering all nighttime activities, nor necessarily covering the summertime. That would be some additional pieces that would, if the board so chooses, take place. But we believe that this would be a very good system. It does cover every single building. So this is one cost. So it's not per building cost. This is a district-wide cost because they would be able to view the cameras live, all cameras that we have around.
Can I just clarify? You said they would also be able to cope with the new building?
Yes, they would be able to cope with the new building when it comes online as well. Yes. Mental health, we continue to recommend a bilingual psychologist. The money with, the air would cover approximately two years and still leave about $20,000 for some parental trainings. We believe it's important that we continue the parental. We believe it's important that we continue the parental trainings. One area to work with everybody on, and I say that even with my, my own children is, and our student reps may not like what I'm about to say, but in all honesty, the phones really do need to go away at the high school level. I would say no later than 10 or 11 o'clock at night. Get a good night rest, don't stay up all night long texting, going back and forth. One of the challenges that we face administratively is most mornings, the middle school and the high school team are working on challenges that happen somewhere between, depending on the age of the group, between 9 o'clock and 2 o'clock in the morning, or 11 o'clock and 4 o'clock in the morning. And they come in the next morning, and we're working on cleaning those up to get everyone to be safe and have a good student, school day. So working with parents to help them understand, yes, please, your child really doesn't need the phone. I'd like to be able to say I could turn off my phone. Unfortunately, I'm one of the ones receiving some of the calls in the middle of the night from some of the stuff that's taking place, so I can't turn off my phone. But I would recommend that everybody else who can possibly turn off their phone, please turn off their phone during those hours. That's my plug on that. But those are the ways we're recommending the grant go. We will be submitting this grant at the end of this week. Perhaps waiting, no, we really can't because it's due on Tuesday of next week. So we do need to move forward.
So are these things we need to vote on, or?
The voting items really are the numbers beyond 1 and 2. 1 and 2 are grant items that we'll be putting in for.
They're not on this, they would be a voting item on future?
Yeah, we, you would be seeing the dollars go forth at that point, yes.
That page with all the questions on it, could you go, do we have any, are those things for just, are those just for us to ponder, or do we have any answers to any of those questions?
They were really just for considerations to ponder. I know one of the questions that was given to me was, how many SROs or SPOs do you hire? You know, are we just putting one on a campus, or are we hiring five, one for every building? You know, do you prioritize one building over another? So these are really just questions to ponder. I'd be happy to, you know, if you have any questions about them, tell you how we came up with them.
Do you find it, do you find it necessary to have personnel in all five buildings? At the same time?
Do I find it necessary? That was really just for a point to discover, to discuss. If you're going to hire an SRO or an SPO on campus, and that person's in one location, you have an incident in another building, I'm sure someone would say, why didn't you have a person in that building?
Yeah, so that's why I'm asking you your opinion. Do you think it'd be best to have a personnel in all of the buildings at the same time? I know it's not cost-wise.
In terms of protection, sure. If you were going to have something in one building, you should have it in all buildings.
Dr. Garitano, can we get a copy of this present? At least this chart in particular? It's not on the link in the?
Well, I, I have it on your computers, I can pull it up for you. It is, it's also in the email I sent. I'll pull it up, I'll come around and get it on your computer for you.
Okay, I mean, okay, so we're supposed to?
Is this list or the list?
This list.
Oh, that list, I'm sorry.
No, this list.
This, this is just a suggestion. We do not have to talk about all those things, we can talk about others. This is just a starting point.
Oh.
Just discussion topics.
Just, just discussion items.
Questions to ponder for discussion.
And I'm struggling from here.
All right, so we can start with any of those questions, or we can start with any of the other board members who would like to discuss potentially, should we hire school resource officers? Should we have additional guards? Should we do anything else infrastructure-wise or personnel-wise?
I have a statement I'd like to read.
All right, Ms. Seamus, go ahead.
Thought about it for a couple of weeks now. What is going to prevent an event like Uvalde, Marjory, Stoneman Douglas, and Columbine? The facts are, all three of these schools mentioned had student resource officers who were unable to stop the perpetrators from entering in. The SROs in these situations had very little effect to the outcome and did not stop these events from stopping. Recent measures, Uvalde did have a security plan. The district had its own small police force. In addition to that, armed guards and a private company that provided drug and gun sniffing dogs. How can you find an individual that you can trust with students? I have an issue with the school-to-prison pipeline that we know exists. Public schools accept everyone, special needs, minorities, families of all income levels. We have to accommodate all. The other issue I have is they wouldn't directly report to admin. This is a management issue and seems to be a breach of privacy for children 18 and under. I don't want the school to feel like a prison. I understand this is a horrible situation, and I believe that the country is collectively grieving and parents want their children to be safe. Hiring an SRO and using metal detectors would be a misallocation of funds to me. I do believe that the district is continually working and communicating with our local law enforcement. And it's important to continue with the support and what's happening now in the form of Alice and other measures preventative strategies within the district's safety plans. Our local law enforcement is trained to respond, but having an SRO doesn't improve that relationship. We need to continue to strengthen and train the response time with our officers in Phoenixville, East Peckland, and Schuylkill Townships. SROs are not the answer to me, and kids will already be on a 24-hour surveillance. That's my statement.
All right, thank you, Ms. Seamus. Any other board members, questions, comments?
It's not typically the students inside the school that I'm, that are causing the problem, you know, from the outside, at least when it, when it's happening. I've heard this argument of how it didn't work in Uvalde, et cetera. I dismiss that argument. It's like saying that if, if us as a board make a bonehead move and make a wrong decision or don't do something right, that's like saying, well, we know, we need to get rid of school boards. That's the wrong idea. We shouldn't have school boards. See what those guys did? Or like analogy that I gave you before, you know, I need to drop 30 pounds, which I do. I go on a diet that doesn't work, that's like me saying, well, diets don't work, I'm never dieting again. Or to make it more local, that's like Scott saying, well, no one should order clams anymore because, you know, one, so no more clams. It didn't work in Rehoboth, it's not going to work anywhere. So I, I kind of, I dismiss that logic, just because mistakes have been made. Well, so that's why I kind of dismiss that logic. And I told you in the past, to your face, I didn't agree with that logic. All these other things are basically, you know, soft responses. Nothing's going to stop a madman that comes in the school, you know, with a gun. It's not perfect, but we had SROs before, likely for a different reason. And in the end, the only thing that's going to stop a bad guy with a gun is a good guy with a gun, in the end. So I think we need to be talking about harder responses than some of the, you know, some of the other stuff that I've seen, some of the other stuff that I've seen on the, on the screen.
When was the last time we had an SRO?
2009, maybe? 2009.
And was, I mean, I don't know if you can directly tell me the reason why we don't have it anymore, but?
I don't, I don't know that, I wasn't here. I, all I can tell you is what I heard.
And I left the high school at the time, so I'm not sure what happened.
I was, I was told that there had been funding and the funding was pulled as one, the primary reason. But again, I was not here when that decision was made.
The original SRO was under seed money after Columbine. So, you know, it was fully paid for a number of years, and then the district became on the hook for 70 or 75%, whatever that may be. You know, and then some concerns about police department was short, SRO was pulled, so things like that were occurring, and you're paying 75%.
Right, and if you're talking about SROs in different schools, that could possibly be like up to a million dollars a year, like of a budget, possibly?
So your rough estimate of cost for armed security, whether it be an SRO, SPO, or private, is somewhere between $90,000 and $100,000 for 183-day school year when students are in the building?
Okay, per school?
Per officer.
Per officer or armed security? Right. So I'm of the position that we need to harden it somehow. If not, I'd like armed personnel in the school personally. And it, but at the very least, narrow it down to single entry, single exit, and add metal detectors. I don't like it any more than you do, Michelle, but that's the world we're living in. We can't just, that's the world we're living in, realistically. These things are going to keep happening, and I pray to God that they don't happen here. So if the, you know, everyone's used to using, you know, metal detectors everywhere else, if it's good enough for a courthouse or an airport, it should be good enough for what we value the most, which is the kids. Maybe someone will feel a little uncomfortable with it, you know, that's the price of, that's the price, that's the price of increased safety. I'm sure there's kids out there that feel uncomfortable with random checks. Maybe we should stop doing that because people, because people feel uncomfortable with it. So at the very least, if we, I think we should be having a conversation about armed personnel. Excuse me, I think we should be having a conversation about armed personnel. Short of that, something that can detect, you know, metal detector and single entry, that single exit.
I'd like to say that if, if we're going to go with an SRO or an SPO to the very first bullet up there, in my opinion, trying to prioritize which building is more valuable, which set of students is more important, is a ridiculous thing to try and do. And if we're going to do this, we got to look at a complete per, per person, per building. So if it's $90,000 a person, it's close to a half a million dollars that you're looking at, in my opinion. As far as, you know, like, you know, I'm not going to go through the list, don't worry, guys. But, but looking at, at the work year, I tend to go with the 183 days, that school is in session. That's my, my thought on, on that. And I, I don't, I don't agree 100% with Mr. Goldberg's comment that the only way to stop a bad guy with a gun is a good guy with a gun. I think you also can try to prevent the bad guy from getting that gun to begin with, and we won't get into that.
You're talking generalities, though. I'm talking real life specifically.
Oh, I'm talking real life, too.
Well, no, you're talking about theory. I'm talking about pragmatics.
No, I'm talking about things that we can, we.
So we want to wait for guns to be harder to get for people?
I didn't say that.
It sounds like what you're saying.
No, then you heard me wrong.
All right, Mr. Goldberg, I'm going to ask you to let Mr. Weiss finish.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I, I guess, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm okay with armed personnel on, on the campus, but I'm on, I'm okay with it only if we're going to do it in all five buildings. And for limiting it to the school year, not necessarily summer school, not that those students aren't as important as the regular year students, but you got a much smaller population, and I believe some of the measures that Dr. Garitano, you know, outlined to us, help us have safer buildings, and, you know, the single point of entry, making sure the doors are locked, all that other stuff, that's all good stuff, and I think that's, that's on the docket any which way, whether we have an SRO slash SPO or not.
All right, any other, Miss, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, this is obviously a topic that has been on my mind for a very long time. It hits me pretty hard, especially not only as a parent, but those of you that aren't aware, I'm an educator, so walking into a building every day, it hits. So it's something that I have stewed over for years, and I, yes, consider the big traumatic violent acts that I pray don't happen anymore, but that's not the world we live in right now. But I also need to consider the day-to-day safety. We talk a lot about mental health and just where the kids are socially, emotionally. I dug pretty deep. I went through as much research as I could find on the topic of SROs, and I can promise you, I went into it with an open mind, and study after study after study said that SROs, and I will quote, "SROs may decrease some forms of violence, but do not prevent school shootings or gun-related incidents. The use of SROs intensifies the use of suspensions, expulsions, police referrals, and arrests of students. We observe that SROs increase chronic absenteeism, particularly for students with disabilities." I certainly respect all of the work that the admin has done consistently and continues to do to tighten up our security. I just do not believe that an armed person is, is the way to go with this. You have, we have to consider the day-to-day impacts of, of an SRO, an SPO, and of metal detectors, and I can't support that.
I don't understand what you mean by the daily impacts. What does that mean?
Have you been in a building where there are metal detectors?
Yeah.
And do you see how it's, schools are supposed to be these places where kids are welcome and they feel safe. Out of, one district out of, I think it was 2,500 kids who were searched, they found four items, and none of those items were dangerous. Now, whether or not kids are, you know, don't bring things because the metal detectors are there, we don't know, but it does not provide a welcome space. Kids are pulled out left and right because they brought a keychain to school. And if you, it, it just, it, to me, where I saw this happening, they had a problem with absenteeism, and I'm sure that that played a role in it. When you don't have a pla, when you have a place where you can be pulled out and, what's the word, and, and pulled aside and kind of pointed at because you brought a keychain to school that you shouldn't have had, or whatever it may be, it's just not a welcoming, safe space outside of making sure people aren't bringing things in. I hope I'm making sense there.
You're, you're making sense, but I think we're talking about two different things. You're talking about emotional state, and I'm talking about safety. And if you don't like the metal detectors, then fine, then forget the metal detectors. Let's focus on.
I don't think they're two different things.
Well, if we took out the metal detectors, which is the majority of your concern, what about that, then?
That's not, actually, the armed security, as well as the metal detectors are my concerns.
Let me narrow down my question. You talked about the, the climate of the building, or whatever your terminology was. What are you talking about in terms of having a cop in the school, or school resource officer, or an armed guard? What is your concern with that?
That research shows that that is not going to stop a violent act.
Okay, well, like I've said, I've said about research a dozen times around here. You show me a research that says one thing, I'll show you one, a research that says the exact opposite.
I certainly respect that, but I have, I have to disagree with you.
You can read all the research, I mean, you can look at all the research you want, and again, I worry that you're still talking about theoretics. I'm talking, I'm talking about cold, hard safety.
I, I'm not talking about theoretics.
Well, you are, when you're talking about studies.
Because, no, when we're talking about an act of violence, there are things that precede that, including, I mean, we talked about belonging, we talked about mental health. If you're not allowing for a safe space mentally, you're setting up an environment that, that contributes to maybe not a major act of violence, but to some extent, it would.
I don't think your response to a, to a school being used as a hard target is theoretical, is theoretical belongingness training. It's not going to stop someone who wants to shoot up a school. It, because it might not, because often it's not even the person that's in, that's a member of that school, of that school community, or in that school. Again, you guys are all talking, now, I shouldn't characterize all of you, but I keep hearing theoretical, soft responses as a solution, and that's simply not going to.
That's not true, Mr. Goldberg, because it is, it's a fact that there was a school resource officer down in Florida that did absolutely no good.
That's right, ran away from it.
Being there, and that's a fact, that's not theory.
Yeah.
Okay? And, and then down in Texas, we had, what, I don't know how many police officers standing in the hall waiting for, I'm not quite sure what to occur.
Right, but you're throwing the baby out with the bathwater. You're assuming that.
No, no, but you're, you're making the statement that arguments counter to yours are theoretical, and yours is the only argument that's factual. And, and I disagree with that point of view, because we are basing it on facts, too, and the studies are not fantasies, the studies are based on actual situations. So to, to make a global comment, to say that unless we're lining up with your point of view, it's, it's a soft, you know, fantasy argument, and it's not hard safety, I think is a mischaracterization.
That's right, and that's why we're, there's nine of us, you know? That's why there's nine of us.
Like, like I said before, I, I, I dismiss that analogy because that's, like, excuse me, I dismiss that statement because that's the same as my euphemism or my analogy from earlier. Just because we make a bonehead decision on the board doesn't mean the boards don't work. And I understand that there's times when it fails, but what you don't see is the times that it works. And if you did, and if you looked at research, you'll see there's plenty of times when school, when schools' catastrophes were remedied or, or didn't happen because of having a school resource officer. No one likes to talk about that.
We did, we literally.
Do you have that data?
We had, we had that data at, I mean, you were at that executive session, but we were shown the Secret Service report that actually looked at every single incident. were shown the Secret Service report that actually looked at every single incident of a mass shooting. And in 66% of the cases, there was a school research, resource officer there.
Okay. And what happened with the, so what, what do you, what happened with the other 34%?
They were all mass shootings.
When they, yeah, that, all, all of those are mass shootings. So, but the two-thirds of the mass shootings that actually occurred had a school resource officer there. So this isn't, I know what you're talking about with your, like, obviously, there's types of research, it can be kinda fudged. This is actual, just looking at every single shooting that happened.
I haven't really been given a good reason not to do it, other than we don't wanna, that, that some people may be slightly emotionally upset.
It doesn't work. That's what, it doesn't work.
I, I think what Ms. Carmenito was saying is that there is evidence that if you look at a pool of schools, and some have school resource officers and some don't, the historical incidence of school shootings is not notably different from one to the other. I've even heard some, uh, incidents that say somebody would potentially go to a building that's got armed guard if they were trying to commit suicide by police.
Okay, well, then how many of the studies that you're talking?
But, but, let me, let me, let me finish.
Okay.
There is documented evidence in a lot of cases that this, uh, what did you call it? The, uh, school-to-prison pipeline is significantly higher. So if there's a police officer in the building, and that police officer encounters a fight, a drug deal, something like that, that, that that does have impacts on the students. It, it takes flexibility away from our administration.
I'm sure, but I'm more interested in the students that are, that are, that are in a safer situation because of that. And if you don't like the cops, and I don't, I'm not saying I have to be, it has to be an SRO, we can use security guards. They don't, that, then you don't have to worry about the pipeline.
Well, I, I think maybe it would be useful to discuss another option that, uh, Dr. Garitano had recommended, which was potentially the person that would be monitoring all of our videos.
Yeah, I heard about that. Doctor, or, uh, Mr. Overland, um, what about the studies? What about the scenarios? And I open this up to anybody, the scenarios that you saw where a school resource officer or armed personnel did stop a massacre? What, what did you think of those?
I mean, you could turn your analogy around and do it the same way. I mean, it's, but it, it's, that's not what happens in the majority of the cases. And, uh, you know, we have a very good response time here. That, you know, our police officers are confident they'll get here quickly. And so, uh, if a, if we're talking about having one resource, resource officer in one school, I mean, getting from one end of the school to the other, the police could potentially be here, uh, in that amount of time.
You can't say out of one side of your mouth, "Look what happened in Texas, look what happened in Uvalde, see, armed cops don't work," and then the other side of your mouth say, "Well, cops will, cops will arrive on time."
I didn't say that.
And, and, well...
I didn't say, I said, "Leave it to the cops. Leave it to our, leave it to our local law enforcement who train, uh, to, to do this. They, they, you know, walk through our buildings. So there's probably more likelihood that there would be police officers already here walking through one of the schools than..."
And Mr. Weiss was giving the example that in Uvalde, all these cops are just standing outside. So what's the difference?
Well, I, I mean, I, I think that...
So what's the difference of the response time?
I think that that is a, a realistic and current example, but obviously, that's probably the most, the one that fits the best into your scenario of, of the...
Well, my, I didn't use the example, but...
Well, I know, it just happened, and it's, it could happen, but our, I think, across the country now, law enforcement have seen the response to that and the reaction to that. And, I mean, who knows when you're in that situation, but I would be hard-pressed to believe that something like that would happen again.
If there is a substantial, if there's examples of where this works, I think, I think it's negligent at best to...
But you have one? You keep saying that.
Well, wait a minute, I will provide it if I must, but my, that's not my question. You're dismissing...
This was the time to do it.
You're dismissing, no, wait a minute. You're dismissing the idea based on this, on this, uh, statistics that you, that you read. What about the ones that you read where it worked?
I, I will tell you, the few that did work, they were told that they worked because someone reported to the SRO that there was a possible incident that was going to happen.
Wonderful.
With that being said, we have many outlets, hotlines, whatever else. Safe to say that those are our places for that to take place. And I also just wanna clarify that I, I, I don't know if I misheard a comment. I, I, I think our relationship with the local authorities is valuable. I respect that. I want them to be involved.
Me, too.
Um, but, yeah, I, I'm gonna stop right there.
I don't care if five, only 5% of the time it works. What if, what if, God forbid, this school district is part of that 5% versus the other, or 10%, or 20%, or 30%?
I think what Ms. Carmenito was mentioning is that there are consequences for having a school resource officer. To your point, one of those consequences could be you could deter an attack, or if an attack should happen, that there's someone right there to respond. And, and we would love for that to happen. But there could be consequences where there's not so positive results for the students.
Well, I mean, I can see where this is going, but I, I still, I still think it's, um, 66%, 64%, whatever, whatever it was. If there's a, if there's a chance that we could, uh, that, that, you know, we could stop, you know, God forbid, a massacre, I don't care if it's 5%, 10%, or 25%, or 30%, or 40%.
So is the chance of improving the outcome of a school shooting worth the dramatically increased risk of students having, being essentially part of the, um, the law enforcement system?
What do you mean, part of the law enforcement system?
So students are gonna have fights at school, they're going to, you know, have incidents, they're gonna have, you know, incidents with drugs at school. If we remove the possibility that those can be handled by administration, and those become judicial problems.
You mean, uh, do, you mean, do I have a problem with, uh, kids getting in trouble for doing stuff they should be getting in trouble for?
Do you have a problem with sending 14-year-olds to prison?
Of course I have a problem with sending the 14-year-olds to prison. Who said anything about prison? What I'm saying is if there's a police officer in the building that's there for a different reason for protection, and he sees, and he or she sees something that's illegal, when did it become a, when did it become a bad thing to, uh, accept that, that an arrest should be made? When did that become a bad thing?
I think the purpose of our...
No, literally, when did that become a bad thing?
Because I think the purpose of our schools should be to try to intervene and help the student, and not send them to prison right away.
Of course, but there are pragmatics like school massacres.
And the other, yeah, but you're talking about 5%, 10%, 20% chance of stopping something in a .0001% chance of something happening. We're talking about potential real impacts on students' daily lives every day when they're here.
Well, you know what? There's a .0000 whatever, winning the lottery, but millions and hun- hundreds of millions of people do it because there's a chance, okay? And I'm not willing to take the risk of a chance, especially for something, for, for something is, is, uh, is innocuous, uh, as putting an armed, as putting armed personnel in school.
But it's not innocuous, there's...
But not innocuous to you, okay? If there's, if...
Uh, no, exactly. It's not innocuous to me or you. It's innocuous to the black kids and brown kids and the kids that don't speak English, or maybe are not here legally.
All kids wanna be protected, Mr. Overland. I, I didn't, I, I don't want to devolve into that stuff.
I'm not devolving, but that's, you're right, it's not, it's innocuous to me and you, but...
Everyone wants to be safe and protected, black, brown, everything. This is not, this is not a, no, everyone doesn't wanna be protected?
They're not the ones that, they don't feel protected, whether it's...
You're gonna speak for them now?
Okay, gentlemen, I'm, I'm gonna ask you a pause for just a second, gentlemen.
No, I'm just speaking for the, their, what they've said.
For who? So, Mr. Goldberg, one point that I read that, that really kinda hit home for me was the interaction with students with disabilities. That the staff at school is well-trained to deal with students who may be autistic, who may have other disabilities. And police officers are, don't have that exact same training. They're, they're trained to enforce the law and potentially not be as aware. Um, looking at some of those statistics about how much more likely a, an autistic person is to, uh, be arrested and even potentially killed because they didn't understand what a police officer was saying.
Look, I know that every yin comes with a yang, but what we're, the, the point of this conversation is to, is to stop a, a potential madman, uh, who wants to, a madman or madwoman who wants to create a massacre. You can always find a reason not to do something. You know, you can tell me statistics, you can say, you know, people with disabilities, et cetera, et cetera. But what you guys are... You don't wanna do it, and you're looking for reasons not to. And if that's the way the board goes, that's the way, the way the board goes. Uh, I'll know that I brought it up and I wanted to do it.
I think as, as a student, these aren't just things to consider to not do it, these are things that are gonna be affecting a large population of the students' daily lives, and something that has to be considered. And it's not, you talked about, um, kinda like, looking at it pragmatically, and not just as a theory. This isn't a theory, this would be daily life that you'd encounter every single day of school.
That's not the theory. They're, they're talking about the theory of what would work versus what wouldn't work, not the theory, not a theory of how the, the, the daily lives would be changed. That's not what we're talking about. Thank you, Ms. Ronco, but that's not what we're talking about.
I'm aware of what you're talking about. I'm, I'm paying attention.
Yeah. Well, then, I applaud you for paying...
That is what we're talking about. That's exactly what we're talking about.
No, I'm not, you, you guys are talking about the day-to-day, uh, day-to-day life of some of the students walking through the hallways. I'm talking about stopping a massacre, God forbid. That's what I'm talking about.
Mr. Goldberg, do you have any, um, data that you can show, uh, cause I, I really am very interested in this, that shows that having a school resource officer reduces the risk of people dying at school, that, that a school is safer because they have that resource officer than a school that doesn't have it?
Do I have it with me? No, don't have it with me.
And, and I think to Ms. Carmenito's point, I, I looked at...
I looked for it.
I, I looked for it, too, because I would love to have that idea, that we have an armed guard that's there protecting us, just like I feel safer getting on a plane after I've gone through that TSA screening. I just didn't see it. The schools that had had incidents, when I looked at the data, was the same, whether or not they had a school resource officer. Now, the response to that may have different timing, there may be, like, to Ms. Carmenito's point, you know, how did we know that there was something to look at? That may be different, but whether or not an incident occurred was not significantly different based on whether or not they had a school resource officer.
Statistically significant, but what about the, but, and I'll, and I'll bring the, bring the question around. What about the 1%, 5%, 10% of schools where it did work? Is, that's why I asked that earlier.
Oh, my God.
I can bring you all the statistics you, uh, uh, you, you want, but if this is a foregone conclusion, I'm frankly just not gonna waste my time with that, to bring that. Cause I see the way, I, I see the writing on the wall, um, how this is, I think, I could bring you whatever statistics that you want. If you're, if you're not willing to, if you're, if, if, if you, and I, this is the collective you, not you, Ms. Turner, um, um, if you're prepared, or if you're prepared to simply discount the few times, let's say, that it, that it worked, then there's really nothing I can, there's really nothing I can do here. Cause no matter what I bring you, you'll say, "Well, statistically, this is not, this is not significant."
These incidents are so rare that
I know, but so s-
None of the information, there, there were not enough, thankfully, there were not enough to have broad generalizations. I'm just trying to weigh the potential pros and cons. Having a school resource officer can potentially have a, a person with a gun who could do something potentially faster.
Right.
Potentially. It could also potentially cause some problems.
Then let's get, then fine, let's switch the conversation from a school resource officer to an SPO, and you don't have to worry about, you don't have to worry about your purported pipeline. I'm, I'm down for that, let's do it.
Is that something that is practical? Do we have people that are available to hire?
I talked to the security guy from Titanium, and he came up to me in the park, well, I, someone, I, I talked to someone from Titanium in the parking lot, he came up to me, or she came up to me, um, uh, from, at the last meeting, and they're having a hard time keeping armed personnel as well, because the police departments are snapping them all up, but it can be done. It can be done. So there goes your pipeline concern. What do you guys say now?
I'd like to say something.
Go ahead, Dr. Seren.
Thank you. As, as I sit here and I listen to both sides, um, I am stunned that we don't have empirical data. I'm stunned that we don't have members of law enforcement. We don't have an SRO, current, former, from another district. I fundamentally am sitting here, looking at and listening to these conversations. I respect that we have different views, but how we're getting here and how we are approaching this is philosophically and empirically, from my position, not effective and is doing a disservice to our students. We have a $100 million budget, approximately, and we have 4,000 students. We do not have, in a meaningful way, from my stance, a, anything that is, that our students deserve to have a conversation about something as important as school safety. As I sit here, and at the beginning of the meeting, Dr. Fegley discussed our new slogan, "You Belong Here." I, I, I don't even feel like I belong here, listening to what I'm seeing and how we are approaching this topic. I am completely, initiative after initiative, I've seen the lack of approaching key topics in a meaningful way. And as I sit here, and I hear, and you can roll your eyes and smile, which you are, and that's typical, because you're coming from a position and experiences that you might not understand. And, and I'm seeing people who are stating opinions, and we're talking about school safety. And we could do more to approach this in a meaningful way, beginning with reliable and valid information, and beginning with a forum in which all stakeholder groups are represented. And if we continue and make any conclusions with what we have to date, I believe that we're potentially doing our students a disservice. That's what I'm gonna say. I, again, fundamentally disagree with how we're approaching this. We have not had a single, we haven't heard anything from law enforcement partners, SROs, that, that we've, somebody mentioned the National Association of School Resource Officers. Let's get some data. Let's have more conversations. People are still on vacation. We don't even have the public back yet. Let's have a conversation after school opens, and parents are back, and they're thinking about this. Let's get empirical information. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Seren. So I do feel like we need to discuss one of the administration's recommendations about having someone on campus who is monitoring our security cameras while students are in the building. And the cost for this was...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt you for a second, Ms. Turner. The last thing I said was, fine, forget the school resource, uh, school resource officer argument, and let's talk about armed, uh, private security, so you don't have to worry about, uh, as much about your pipeline. What about that?
Fair enough. Would you like to discuss that further? Any other board members have comments?
I mean, I think I've made my position pretty clear. Um, for those of you that are opposed to it because of pipeline, uh, because of, uh, purported pipeline reasons, how about that?
So are you suggesting armed or unarmed additional guards?
Armed.
I support that.
Do you have some empirical evidence and data to back up your supporting of it?
I don't have to support my opinion, but I'm happy to get empirical data.
So we all do, but you don't have to.
I haven't asked you to.
Sorry, I hit the wrong button.
I support having armed...
That's me, sorry.
Who's cutting my mic?
I apologize, I hit the wrong button, I'm so sorry.
I liked it better when it wasn't working last week.
I'm so sorry.
I fully support armed guards in schools.
So are you...
Law enforcement, guards, we need to have this conversation. We need to get more information. And with appropriate, with appropriate information, we can make informed decisions. It's a fluid conversation.
I, I don't know why you're liv, I mean, it's, might seem ironic, well, it might seem counterproductive, but you are, I don't understand why you are living and dying with, 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 uh, research and statistics. You know that you can't count on it 100%. And even if the statistics were 95% that it doesn't work, we're still, we're, I don't know why we're tap dancing with statistics. I'm talking about real life, and you guys are talking about theoretics.
I think it's the other way around. I think we're talking about real life and the everyday impact we heard from our students.
I'm talking about the, no, I...
This is everyday life, what, what the students are gonna go, go through every day with someone with a gun.
I'm not talking about the everyday im-
You're s-
I'm not talk, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the everyday impact of an actual massacre, not the average, everyday impact.
But that's not an everyday impact, that's a one in a...
When it happens, it is, Scott. That's the whole point. When it happens, it is.
I know, but you are dismissing the everyday impact on our students
I'm not dismissing it, I'm weighing it.
For the one in a million chance.
It is my opinion, exactly. And I'm not dismissing it, I'm weighing it. You keep talking about, you, you keep talking about, uh, statistics say this and statistics say that. I'm willing to admit that statistically, assuming you agree with the statistics, that, um, it, it might work, it might, uh, work less than, it works less than we'd like to. But what, what number's sufficient for you? Is, is, is a 5% better chance better for you?
That's the discussion that we're, that we've been having. It's, it's whether we think that there is more harm in having this in the school every day versus the very, very, very small chance of it maybe working if there is an incident here.
And it's all willing, it's all a matter of how much risk you're willing to take. I don't see, I actually don't, I, I, I'm, I am talking about pragmatics. I think you're not talking about pragmatics. You're talking about the day-to-day life of, of some of the students, uh, if there's a person in the, in the, uh, in the building, um, carrying a weapon. I'm not talking about, you know, the theoretical feelings. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about pragmatics. I'm talking about if someone breaks in and starts shooting.
Right, and then...
So therefore, it...
Mr. Weiss has been waiting for just a minute, so I'm gonna let him have a moment.
Okay, so I, I hear what Mr. Goldberg's saying about the differences between, uh, an SRO and an SPO, uh, and one having a greater impact on the student-to-prison chain, if that's the right set of words, I don't know. words, I don't know. And I think he brings up a point that I guess I would like to either learn more about, and I don't know if it's the best way to learn about it, let's put it that way. I, you know, if we did not have a police officer per se, but had a private security individual that's armed in the building, we could direct them, I guess there's a question, can we direct them to limit their focus on, you know, school fights versus, you know, armed situations? I don't know the answer to that type of thing. I would think we could, because like someone said, the administration is trained to deal with a lot of these types of situations. And letting them have an opportunity to work with some of those could have a better outcome for the student in the long term, even if they're doing something that's illegal at the present time.
I can't believe we're having a... Okay, go ahead, Mr. Weiss.
I actually think, were there student representatives, one of you want to... Um, you can keep going, I'm good for now. Okay. Mr. Weiss, what you doing?
So I guess, you know, I'm looking for some input from administration on, you know, they run the schools, on that difference between an SPO and an SRO, or private security type of thing, and do that. And again, I don't want to get into territory, that's executive session territory, so, you know.
So we're getting some review of what's in the legal code, what we can discuss and what we can't discuss.
No, thank you. I don't want to go somewhere that's illegal to go to.
So, Mr. Goldberg, are you...
There's specific school... Can you have one? And I think it was included information that was shared with you last week. It's a school code issue in terms of what, who's employing the individual. If it's an SRO, we're not employing the individual. If it's an SPO, we may be employing the individual, or it could be a contractor. And then, or we can go with the third option, which I think is the one Mr. Goldberg's been talking about, where you hire private security that can be armed or unarmed. And those are the three types of school personnel that are allowed for in the code. And if you're going to contractually hire security, then you're going to be able to, you know, talk about what you want that person to do, just like you would anybody else that you hire. And I think we could probably leave it there.
So I guess I'm trying to get consensus as to what our next steps are. Well, first one was, there was this administration recommendation that we, as the board, consider an additional expenditure for a person who would be monitoring our security cameras while students are in the building. Is that what administration is recommending?
That's one of the items. We are also recommending item three, four, five, and six that we had talked about an hour ago, or whenever that was. Those are one-time, those...
Those are one-time expenses in the building.
That's correct.
As opposed to an ongoing employing someone discussion. So can you tell me why you think it's a good idea, or why you are recommending this monitor?
Our school safety report said that it would be best practice, we have lots of cameras that we have throughout the district, it would be best practice to have somebody who was looking at those cameras that would be able to alert administration, i.e. school administration, of something taking place. And then that way administration can get to that location and work through that situation.
And that person could contact law enforcement?
The person could contact law enforcement, but would not contact law enforcement unless they see an intruder.
Okay. So if they saw a person in the hallways with a...
With a weapon.
With a weapon.
Yes.
They can call 911.
That would be part of their job description, to call 911 at the same time that they're calling the administration.
Right.
Because they'll have to put, will put the building on lockdown at that point, initiate Atlas.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So is the idea that this person monitoring the videos could potentially shorten the response time in the event of an emergency?
Yes.
Anything more specific than that needs to be discussed in executive session.
All right. Did any board members want to discuss that any further, or what's our feeling about this?
Did anyone consider the feelings of the kids that are going to be watched by all these cameras? I mean, that's the paramount concern here, right? That is, that's bringing, you're bringing cameras to a gunfight. Okay? They're going to call the cops when there's someone walking around the hallways with a gun? Is that supposed to be, is that supposed to be a consolation?
This is a layered approach to a...
We don't have time for that, Mr. Weiss. We can tap dance and talk all we want. In the meantime, there's...
Okay. Well, right now, the administration is looking for, at least this recommendation, to go forward or not go forward with this monitor of the cameras that already exist, whether we have an SPO, an SRO, or anything else. This is independent of that, so I think we should just focus on the recommendation of the administration here, vote one way or the other, and then, and then go on to the next layer or layers, which will be the SPO, SROs, whatever.
If we, my concern is, if we vote that in, then all of a sudden the money for SPO or SRO will then have been depleted.
I don't think so.
And then we're stuck in the same situation.
And this is a discussion item.
Sorry, we can't do it because we don't have enough money.
It's not on the agenda as voting.
I don't, I don't think, well, I'll let administration talk to the finance part of that.
I guess, we can talk all we want, but the fact of the matter is that we're going to have some, I'm glad for the cameras, I guess, but having someone call the cops when, if there's a guy walking around with a gun, what does that get us? How's that any consolation?
And how many cameras do we have, Dr. Fegley?
I'm not going to go into that.
We have all these cameras and all the students are being watched, but we didn't think about who's going to be watching the cameras, watching the students, and now we want money for somebody to watch students.
Dr. Sereni, I'm going to ask you to not discuss the cameras and the view of the cameras.
We just talked about this a second ago.
We can go in a session, executive session, if you have specific questions or want to talk about that.
Dr. Fegley is asking for personnel to monitor cameras, which are already installed, which was just stated publicly a minute ago, and we didn't think about prior to now, having personnel?
Yes, we did. Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
But now we're asking to hire...
Yes, we did. Think about it before.
The agenda is a discussion item, not a voting item.
It is not a voting item. So we could move this forward and have it as a voting item on the agenda for the September the 12th meeting.
What specifically?
Approval of the potential $80,000 and associated other fees that might be needed for infrastructure to have a person contracted to watch the videos.
Do we have any public comment line up?
There is an open public comment session that we will do as soon as we are finished with this discussion.
I'm asking if anybody signed up for it. I'd be curious to hear if any...
We're not voting on that tonight, Dr. Sereni.
I know we're not. I'm just asking if anybody signed up, and I'm curious to hear that they have to sign up.
It's still, I think it's still over there, right?
It's still over there to sign up, yeah.
All right. So we've been at this for a while. I am going to ask if anyone would like to make a... Do we need to make a... All right. Is there consensus on whether or not we should move the approval of this additional $80,000 as a voting item on the 12th or not? Jerry, you want to put this on the voting, on the agenda for the 12th for approval as a discussion item? I mean, use me as a voting item on the next meeting. This is the $80,000 for the video monitor.
My answer is yes. I didn't think it was a B&amp;G item.
No, this would be a voting item at the next meeting. Do you want to have this as a voting item on the next meeting? Mr. Overland?
I'm very torn on this one. I mean, we can vote, sure, we can have it as a voting item.
We can have it as a voting item.
We're talking about the cameras.
This is someone monitoring the cameras. Ms. Carmonito?
Sure.
Ms. Seamus?
Have it on the voting item.
Mr. Goldberg?
Yes.
Dr. Sereni?
Yes.
All right. So we will have that as a voting item, a roll call item, on the agenda for the September the 12th meeting.
I'd also, I'd also like to add, I'd like to also add as a voting item, the matter of the hiring of either an SRO or SPO.
For all buildings or for one building?
For all buildings.
So that would be five.
Could you repeat that?
Can you repeat your suggestion, Mr. Goldberg?
Yeah, on the same, also have as a voting item, the possibility of SROs or, SRO or SPO for all buildings.
So you're...
Are you limiting to those two or any of the options?
Well, we have school resource officer and the armed security. Those are the two, those are the two options.
There's three distinctions. There's SRO, SPO, private security. We would be looking at private security, which would be through our company, a retired police officer.
Yes. Then, then either of the three, any of the three.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mrs. Turner.
Yep.
While we're on the subject of adding things to the agenda, I would like to add a placeholder to the, not the September 12th meeting agenda, but the September 26th meeting agenda, item statement from board member. I just, we'll provide additional information later, but if you could add to the September 26th agenda placeholder for a statement for me, I have to think about a few things that I'm hearing tonight and how things go on the 12th. This is just fundamental.
Noted.
Thank you.
So at this point, I think we're ready to move on to open public comment? Is that correct?
Are we adding one?
Yes, so we will be adding those two items to the agenda for the voting meeting on September the 12th.
As well as a placeholder for the September 26th meeting, please. You heard that?
I heard you.
Thank you.
Dr. Kiritano, can I ask a quick question? I don't know if you know this or not, or if we can talk about this in public, but do you know if local law enforcement has opinions on private armed security in the district versus their own?
That's an executive session item?
Yeah.
All right. So we are ready to move on to a public comment on any school subject. We'll start with Mr. Maraz.
Good evening, John Maraz, Skookel Township. Well, that was a long discussion. Two weeks ago, I sat here with the rest of you. We heard about the safety committee and the security, and I know a lot of this stuff was in private. What I did ask, and what Dr. Ratahan said, was that the law enforcement was to notify us and the public through probably reverse 911. Now, I'm not sure how that works with 911 when you have your cell phones. They have our house phones if you have a house phone. So I'm asking, when you're talking about the security issues, us, the public, who are very near your schools here, and if we're at home, that's fine, but somehow, some way, the school district needs to have us in the public be aware of how this whole thing should work. You know, we talked about Limerick. Limerick sends out their sirens once a month. And I'm not asking for a siren, I'm asking for a notification by cellphone, because if I'm out of my house or my yard, I want to know if something's happening right across the street in a playing field, or in the learning center, or man of it. You're responsible for us, not just for the schoolchildren, but the public. So we should be notified somehow, some way. You're saying that law enforcement should notify us. Has that ever been tested at Barclay? Anywhere? Let us know about that. If you're going to put this in for discussion for having a security guard, let us know also, because we have the right to know. You know, you belong here, as Dr. Fegley says. We, the public, who are near the schools, are part of you. We pay your school, we pay the school taxes. We elected you here. I brought this subject up years ago, never got an answer. You know, if I go to the Skookel Township meeting next week, what am I going to hear? Oh, we're going to do this? Well, I will ask that question also, but I think you, who are here, should be able to tell us. In addition, when I did make that comment two weeks ago, I followed it up with a letter to the board. I never got a response. I did get a response on one of my three subjects, and I appreciate, you know, Mr. Weiss replying back to me by email. For the people who come to these meetings, I know it's a comment section...
30 seconds.
But come on, we should get answers. And finally, as I told you at the B&amp;G meeting, I hope my face is being showed to the public now. My wife called or texted me and said, "I like watching the back of your head." You know, the people need to know and watch the people who are speaking. When the person from Mr. Schrader's office was here, they saw the whole presentation of her on the screen. So I'm not sure who's watching the tech here, but the people speaking here should be showed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maraz. Our next speaker is Neville Ranji. Mr. Ranji?
I guess not.
I guess not. Dr. Fegley, is there anything you'd like to respond to?
Yes. The constituent is right. They did come here several years ago to ask the same question about notifying. At that time, a response was given, and the response given was it was the responsibility of the police department. I also know that the constituent did go to the Skookel Township and talked to them, and they said, "Yes, it's the responsibility of the police department, and you will get a response and notified when we deem it appropriate to do the notification." I understand the desire to know. I understand the need to make sure all students are first safe, and that we take care of the students and the staff first in this particular issue. And I can only remind the board that within about two and a half minutes, the police are here, and once the police are here, they are in charge, and they will be doing all notifications at that point. So the response has not changed over the last four years.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Fegley. So with no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 9:08 PM. Thank you for attending.